Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the May 10th, 2020 regular meeting of the Dearborn Public Schools Board of Education. We're getting started right on time at seven o'clock. Could I please have the call to order?
Trustee Sam Berry?
Here.
Trustee Patrick D'Ambrazio?
Here.
Trustee Rexan McDonald?
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Adam Moser, here. Trustee Mary Petlicoff?
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts?
Here.
President Thorpe?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Ms. Mervette Sabell, Principal of Howard Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko, President Thorpe, Board of Trustees, and Dearborn community. My name is Mervette Sabell, and I'm the building principal at Howard Elementary. On behalf of the Howard students, staff, and community, we'd like to thank you for welcoming the Howard Dragons to lead with the pledge.
Hello, I'm a proud Howard Dragon. My name is Norvee Doof from Miss Muscogee's fourth grade class.
Hello, I'm a proud Howard Dragon. My name is Maya Mustafa from Mrs. Muscogee's fourth grade class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Howard Dragons. Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone, Board of Trustees, public, members of the audience here. We're going to start with our traditional moment of silence. We're looking at, right now, it's unfortunate, we've had over 508,000 deaths in the United States due to COVID, and over 19,000 in Michigan, and that, those numbers could be more on the national level as well, based on the tracking. I also just want to mention, I'm not going to mention names, but a friend of mine who I taught with when I started out at Salina, is, her husband had passed away in, you know, otherwise good health, and within a week and a half of getting COVID. And so my thoughts and prayers go out to her. She's a friend of mine, and, you know, sorry for her loss and everyone that's dealing with those situations right now. We also had, unfortunately, a passing of a student, William Parrish, from Nowland School, and I did reach out to the family. Heartbreaking when you lose a student, not due to COVID, but, from what we're aware, but the student, you know, had different situations they were dealing with, and the mother was very appreciative of the support from the district, so we can, thoughts and prayers are with her and her family and the Nowland community, and if we could just take a moment right now, silence, please. Thank you, everyone. And I will just go along my, like I normally do every month with my reports, Mr. President. So, starting with agenda items, we have our monthly retirements, and so both want to congratulate all the retirees, you know, thank them for their years of service to our district and our students, and so we'll go ahead, and as we get closer to June, we tend to get a larger list as people are making those decisions. So we have Ms. Basim Jusha, 21 years of service. Ramona Bridgeman, over 15 years of service. Deborah Ford, over 14 years of service. Dr. Joan De Souza, who's here, 13 years of service. She's actually in the back there. Ali Hyder, 22 years of service. Matthew Louie, 27 years of service. Gloria McKenzie, 30 years of service. Kevin Ranko, over 30 years of service. Lawrence Sarna, 16 years of service. Gary Shelby, 34 years of service. Sandra Smith, 46 years of service. And Scott Waika, over 26 years of service. If we can show our appreciation, congratulations. So I do have another agenda item, and I think this is real good news, and appreciate the leadership of the Board and Mr. Tom Wall out of the Finance Department. We were able to, and we partner with a lot of our bonding, too. We partner with the college, and some of the things that we do when we look at going out and bonding, and so I know President Cavallone is here, so we appreciate, you know, the partnership and all the things that we do working together. But the school district and under Mr. Wall's leadership is, we're looking at over $4 million in savings, taxpayer dollars, over the life of the bond, and so we talked about that in the Finance Committee today, and so I just think that's something, it's on the agenda tonight, and it's a responsible thing that the Board is looking at taking action on, working together with administration, and saving taxpayer dollars, so I think it's a positive thing that we're doing. And you may have seen the press release that went out, and I did have some communications that came to me thanking the district for saving taxpayer dollars, so. Okay, I'm going to move to non-agenda items. There is, just to point out to the Board, and I know you've seen, there's a proposed Board of Education meeting for, scheduled for 2122, and that is there for potential approval in June. And so I just wanted to point it out, it's actually linked to the agenda here, you could look at it, but just take a look at that, and if there's any comments or concerns to either the President or to Ms. Harris, and I know she communicates with Kathy on that as well over at the college to situate those meetings. We have Ms. Abdalbaki, who's here, Assistant Principal at Fortson, and she has a number of students that have been leading the Safe Driving Campaign in Dearborn. It's been going back several months. In fact, we have a sign out front. We have T-shirts, and yes, I do have my T-shirt. I'm not wearing it today, but I have one, and I know, I know Trustee Petlicoff was helping to distribute signs in the community as well.
I also have my T-shirts in the laundry.
So I'm going to invite them to come up, and I'll mention their names, and we'll just ask, guys, you come up for social, you know, social distance, but it's okay, you can come up, and so we have, I believe, we have Hiba Abdalbaki, as mentioned, Reda Mazin, Ahmed Sharif, Ahmed Kaid, Aleima Abdo, Mohammed Dekhla, and Hussein Hawili. And I believe, did I get everyone, or did I miss anybody?
Go. Thank you so much for having us.
You might want to push the microphone a little towards you.
Towards me a little bit more? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll restart. Hello, Board members and Superintendent Maleko. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Reda Mazin. I am a member of the Fortson Safe Driving Committee, and we are here to discuss with you our initiatives that we had this year. So it started back at the start of the year when Fortson's 12th Grade Assistant Principal, Mrs. Abdalbaki, she reached out to Ford Motor Company. Did it cut off? Okay, Ford Motor Company's sponsored program, Strive for a Safer Drive, where they kind of carry the same initiative that we were hoping to with Safe Driving for the committee, and she hoped to receive a grant. And thankfully, she did receive the grant, and upon receiving it, she tried to find the most ambitious students from Fortson High School that she could to support and join the initiative, and thankfully, she stumbled upon myself, Ahmed Sharif, Abir Hassan, and Hedy Obate. And now I'm going to pass the mic on to Fortson High School's Ahmed Sharif, and he's going to elaborate a bit more on how we got this whole thing started.
Good afternoon, Board members and Superintendent Maleko. My name is Ahmed Sharif, and I'm also one of the committee members from Fortson High School. As a team, we first developed goals to build awareness against distracted driving, promoting people usage and other ways of safe on driving. We started a school-wide educational outreach program, campaign, and raised awareness about the statistics that result from distracted driving. We also needed to choose a catchy slogan so students and community members can attach a phrase and image to our cause, which would help people remember the information we disseminate. Our team decided to make it a building-wide slogan contest, and we chose the one that we felt was original, addressed the cause, and would be memorable. Hence, we have Save Nives, Save Lives. Mohammed Dekhla from Dearborn High School, take it from here.
Hello, Board members and Dr. Maleko. I'm Mohammed Dekhla from Dearborn High, I'm a junior. Earlier this year, Ms. Abdalbaki and Fortson Safe Driving Committee reached out to Dearborn High's National Honor Society, asking us who would like to join the initiative. Students that did want to join were able to meet up with Ms. Abdalbaki and the Safe Driving Committee in a Zoom meeting, and we discussed ways on how to spread awareness about distracted driving in our neighborhoods. A way that we decided to do this was by wearing these shirts with the slogan on them around Dearborn to promote our cause. I believe that Dr. Maleko and Trustee Petlicoff have one already, so I brought a shirt for the rest of you.
What's that? Thank you very much.
We've got a board member on screen.
I'd like to pass to Hussein Hawili from Dearborn High.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Dr. Maleko. My name is Hussein Hawili. I am from Dearborn High, and with Mohammed Dekhla here and other participants from Dearborn High, we have Lily Paco, Grace Becker, Daniel Dedalov, Yima Haydar, and Michael Faz. We recently had a Zoom meeting with Officer Kevin Kagan from Dearborn Police, and we discussed statistics between the crashes in Dearborn, Michigan, in the year of 2019, 2020, and we basically, he basically told us like the main locations and everything like that, and we found out that the crashes were actually a huge number compared to like other cities and, and other, other states. And from Etzel Ford High School, we have Ahmed Kaid.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ahmed Kaid from Etzel Ford High School. I'm a junior, and we also participated in the Safe Driving Initiative with Fortson High School. And along with me, and Yima Abdo, who is also here, are students Sadikirak and Devon Flum, who also help, very important cause. What we did is that we received, or in total, we received the signs, and we spread them apart in our yards, at the local parks, and at the schools, especially the school parking lots. And it's been great to see them spread out across, all across the city, knowing full well that people are promoting safer driving even outside of this very building. Finally, here we have Yima Abdo, who is also from Etzel Ford.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Maleko, my name is Yima Abdo, and I'm also a junior at Ford High School. So I'm glad I'm the only girl. I'm the only girl today here, so kind of scary, but yeah. So we actually, I'm actually proud to say that we created and are currently maintaining this campaign where we post reminders and tips to drive safely, and encouraging other students to drive safely, and the speed limit, and not actually like pay attention to their surroundings during tough times and during the night. We're actually, we actually created a video where we submitted to Dearborn CDC, well, yeah, we created a video, we submitted to Ford Motor Company sponsored program, actually, Drive for Safer Drives, and we have the video actually up on our Instagram, Dearborn at Dearborn CDC. I always mess it up with C. So we're actually glad to show you guys the video after probably done, yeah. And yeah, thank you guys for having us tonight again.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. I wasn't attending on speaking tonight, but I just, having our Safe Driving Committee students here, I just have to say that this district really has leaders, and they take initiatives, and they led me. All I did was write off the paperwork, so I just want to thank them for their own leadership, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I believe there are going to be a few questions, and I don't know who will want to address, Trustee Petlicoff?
I just wanted to let you all know that when I first saw the signs, I wasn't exactly sure who was responsible for them, so I investigated, and when I found out what this committee was doing in the initiative, I want to explain to you that I'm also the president of something called the Federation of Neighborhood Associations, and this is across the city. We're an umbrella group, just like the umbrella groups for PTAs in your local schools, that we bring together all of our local community members. And the number one complaint I have heard for year after year after year from neighborhoods is driving. Speeders, fast driving, distracted driving, you name it, it is one of the ongoing issues that we hear. And this last couple of years has been especially challenging. The pandemic seems to have unleashed a lot of people who have decided that they're either bored, or are finding ways to entertain themselves. That has increased that visibility of poor driving, and we know that where the young drivers begin is where we need to start the educational process. It's not all about the students' poor driving, because it's adults, too, who've been driving for years, who are displaying bad behavior. But the ability to bring visibility to the community that no longer wants to tolerate and accept bad driving as a norm is something that I commend you all for taking on as a challenge, number one, and I hope that you continue to lead by example with that. But I will tell you that when I asked for the signs and I received 60, I've got seven left, I had, I put it out there to my neighborhood associations, said, does anybody want signs, and I had a large number of people say, yes, please, and then they asked me for more afterwards. So I have a couple left that I've been hanging on to just in case, because I knew you were going to be doing the presentation, which will also get some more visibility for you. If you need the rest of my signs, you're welcome to them, and I will bring them back over to Fortson, so you can distribute them if you have a place, but that's all I had left out of the 60 that I had in the box. So, and I will tell you that people were excited. They were excited that you were doing something. They were excited that they had an opportunity to help. And if you look around town, when you see a whole street full of signs, you'll know those are neighborhood associations who are supporting you, and are trying to help challenge those individuals who think that it's okay to endanger everybody else's lives while they're on the roads, and that they have a right to, and we're now standing up and saying, no, you don't. And so I want to thank you all for taking on that challenge.
Trustee Moser?
Yes. Reda Ahmed, Mohammed Hassan, Ahmed Yima, as well as Ms. Abdalbaki, thank you so much for this initiative. I've been watching you on social media and promoting your initiative as well, and coming from you, from the students, you will influence your peers more than we would or others would. So thank you for taking this on. I think this is a great initiative, especially in a city that we see and follow every day of crashes happening all over, unfortunately, so hopefully this will impact others and make sure that others will pay attention to the roads. And unfortunately, this is a huge distraction to all of us when we're driving, so I ask everybody to always put it aside when you drive, because it could take a split second for a person to be distracted and to be involved in car accident that may change their entire lives and may kill other people on the road as well. So thank you once again for this initiative.
Yes, thank you very much for all that you've done. Now, we're entering one of the historic times where there's usually more, not necessarily more accidents at the end of the school year, but there's definitely more emphasis on trying to do things to prevent it. Are you doing anything special as we're approaching the year-end, graduation, proms, that type of, of those events, to get the awareness out and remind people to drive safely?
Do you want to step to the mic?
I said, I think the most important thing right now is to actually raise awareness about like the causes and how to prevent it, because a lot of people, like you said, are happy the year, the year's over, and they're happy to be with friends and family, just enjoy it. I think right now, like to sit down with friends and family, let them know how to like prevent like distracted driving, and how to like get them to focus on the road and put away their phone, like you mentioned. Very important right now, especially like the end of the
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
President Thorpe?
One moment, Trustee McDonald.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, it's so refreshing to see you students in person, since we've been talking about students, so it's so nice to actually have you guys here. So thank you, because I think seeing you guys definitely gave us a little, you know, energy, so I applaud you for being here, and thank you for stepping up. I think a lot of the times that, you know, when we have these opportunities, you might be hesitant, but also to the one female on there, thank you, because I think that these opportunities here that you've decided to step up and to put yourselves out there will be an example to the others in your school. But also I want to know, number one, how do I get a lawn sign, and number two, are there any other things?
I'll give you one.
But if there's anything else that you can think of that we could help, to help spread the word or whatnot, please let us know, because I think it is important with summers now coming up, and students are going to be out of the school buildings and and out playing and riding their bikes, that we make sure that we're vigilant to make, that they are safe as well come summertime. So, thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
I too wanted to commend the students for their hard work, and I agree wholeheartedly that our district is full of leaders at every level, and they show it time and time again. As Trustee Watts said, I'm curious as to if they still have signs available, not just for myself, I would like one, but I'm sure other members of the community would as well, as well as T-shirts, and how can people that are interested get ahold of those? And also, there was a mention of safe driving tips. Where can those be found if people are interested in more information?
Yes, I, thank you. The, all the facts and tips can be found on our Instagram, and as to shirts, we probably do have some extras, and for signs, I know, I, I know, I'm sorry.
Trustee Petlicoff, I probably took the last of them.
Yeah, I, she said that she did have a few left, and that if anyone needs, she's offering to give some. If not, I'm pretty sure we might have extras, but basically, you could find the tips and stuff on our Instagram.
Thank you.
I'll give every board member the last seven.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. It's good to see you all.
Okay, thank you, and I'll continue along. Great job, students, and Ms. Abdalbaki, thank you. So I'm going to have Ms. Peterson and Ms. Alcadre come up. We're going to talk about graduation and other events, especially senior events. Obviously, you know, last year, we were able to put together a drive, I'd say drive-by, walk-by ceremony that honored all the families during the, when the COVID pandemic had started last year. We're in a different place this year. We have guidelines from the Health Department, and we've been following, and I know the principals have been meeting with Ms. Peterson, so I'm going to let them go over what we're planning to do with graduation and other events, and just need to be flexible as well, because situations change, so we're planning for a couple of different scenarios, so I'll hand that over to them. Turn it over to them.
So that was our charge, as second semester began, that we would have like Plan A and Plan B, and continue to watch the guidance, and I have to say that the high school principals have been planning, and their focus really is, how can we provide a wonderful celebration for our students in a safe environment, knowing that about 56% of our high school students have chosen to learn virtually for safety's sake, so how do we provide a ceremony for them in a safe environment? I have to say, I don't want to follow those students, right? They were really good, and I noticed as I was watching them, like, all of a sudden, I started to feel really good, and you captured it, like, we got to see real live students here today, so that was great. But Ms. Alcadre is going to kind of capture what the high school principals have been working on.
Good evening, President Thorpe, Dr. Maleko, and trustees. So in terms of, let's talk about graduation, because students are excited about graduation. We're trying to bring the tradition back. So we will do a normal graduation with the exception that at, at Etzel Ford, there'll be one ceremony. At Dearborn High, they'll have two, because they have about 470 students, so they'll divide that into two, and then at Fortson, we're also going to have two ceremonies. We have 600 graduates, so there'll be 300 graduates at each. We're going to give students two tickets to give to their families to attend, so we will keep the limits under 1,000 attendees, but at least we're able to have what we feel is our traditional graduation. Masks will be worn, obviously, we'll have social distancing. There is, if the weather is bad, we are not going inside. We will have a predetermined date to have this ceremony at another time. The other thing, the main thing is, all students will be tested prior to the occasion, and if a student has been completely vaccinated, and it's been two weeks prior to the occasion, then they will not have to be tested. Students may obtain their own PCR test 72 hours in advance of the ceremony. So again, all our events will be outdoors. Any indoor event Any indoor event that we may hear about has nothing to do with our schools. They're not sponsored by the schools. So I just want to let everyone know that. They are not school or district sponsored if there are indoor events. And so during these events, we don't want students to intermingle. They will, for example, for prom, if they will sit in groups of six, a cohort, they will eat together and they'll do things together, whether it be prom or, or a barbecue. So we're going to keep students in groups of six. And any transportation, we're asking students to cohort with the same group if they need a ride to the place. So we are following the Michigan Department of Health, uh, Health and Human Services guidelines. And as we know, those guidelines tend to get changed periodically, so we will keep an eye on that, just to make sure we are adhering to whatever the state is telling us.
Yeah, are, I'm assuming that any prom plans are going to be outdoors as well on athletic field or whatever?
So Dearborn High will do their prom at the Dearborn Inn outdoors. Etzel Ford is going to do it at Etzel Ford. They're going to have a combination prom and barbecue and, on their field. And Fortson will not have a prom, but they will have a barbecue outside on, at our field.
Then, can I assume, because it's going to be awfully tough to ask these kids to not intermingle and I, I get it, they're excited, it's the end of the year and so many things have, they haven't been able to participate in. Are we going to have additional staff or there's going to be parent volunteers? Who's going to be helping to kind of maintain some kind of distance for them?
We're going to make sure we have enough support staff there at the, at each of these occasions. Plus, we're also thinking about having like a band. So if it's a group of six, maybe they all have a red band.
Then, yeah.
So we know who belongs together. So we're talking about doing something like that. Good question.
Additional questions? Go on, trustee.
Yes, sir. I believe I know the answer, but I just want to put it out there. So if the guidelines change between now and graduation, we're sticking to our plan with the two ceremonies at Fortson.
That's what we're planning, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that's out there.
Yes.
Because some people were asking, what if, what if?
Yeah, the ceremonies are set.
If things got better.
Yeah.
If, if things got worse, we might have to avoid.
We might have to do the other, I understand that, yeah.
But if they relax anymore of the mandates, we're still going to go with this plan because it's kind of late in the day to try to change up, I would assume.
Honor's night, it will be pre-recorded, just like we did last year, and parents and students will be able to view them on, on the date that we set for them.
Trustee Watts.
So I'm hearing that the students need to take the PCR test twen- uh, seventy-two hours before graduation. Is that also a requirement for the parents or is it just for the students?
Just for the students, yes.
Yep.
Right, that, that seventy-two hour test is their choice. We are going to do the rapid test. We will be testing our students.
Oh, regardless?
Twenty-four hours before, yes.
Ah, okay.
Trustee Moser.
That was my question, but I have an additional one. So there's two ceremonies at Dearborn and Fortson will happen also on the same day or different days? Same day?
The same day. Oh, yes, each, each, yes. Ours will be at four o'clock and seven o'clock. And Dearborn High will have their first one at eleven o'clock and the second one at two o'clock. We want to give enough time for the first group to leave so that the next group can come. So there's like a three-hour separation there. Just ensure safety.
And I'll just make a comment too, that, you know, we're doing this, we've been following the science. I'm meeting with the Health Department officials on a regular basis, as I know the board's aware and I've talked about it. And we know that the outside is safer. And so that's why we're approving outside events in a safe manner. We're, people are getting vaccinated now, uh, we have testing ability. And so we know we have things that we can do this year to protect and I think it's responsible, any of our permits and events, we're only approving anything that's outside. And I believe it's the responsible thing to do at this point in time. So if you, I think Ms. Alcadre mentioned and the principals have been working hard and it's a stressful time of year for principals, uh, but we want to recognize the students and give them some sense of, you know, closure as they graduate. And we know last year we did, but we were under tougher circumstances with the, with the virus. And right now, uh, we know more and so we want to do that, uh, but we also want to be responsible. And so we're only, so that's why we want to be careful that any in, inside events that may be out there that people are talking about in the community have no affiliation with the school district whatsoever. So we also want to make, you know, that clear. But we do want to, you know, recognize our students and allow them to have that sense of closure and, and celebration within COVID rules and in a safe manner. I'd also say too, I just saw, I was, we were in the committee meeting, that it looks like the FDA approved the younger group of students.
Yeah, yes.
And I'm just going to mention that right now. We already have plans in place to go back to Etzel Ford and we're working with both DMC and Henry Ford Hospital and possibly the Health Department to start bringing the vaccines into more schools. So more to come on that, but I know Etzel Ford is already set up under Ms. Peterson's coordination. And then we have DMC we're working on and we're going to work on other groups, but we want to, you know, we know that that'll get us going towards, you know, a better situation for the fall, so.
Trustee Pellicoff.
Yeah, and if you are hearing in the rumor mill about indoor activities and people planning on other events, in the spirit of wanting to give their students something, they could be undermining that student's ability of participating in their graduation if they have that event prior to and then they end up testing positive right before graduation day. So I would caution everyone who thinks that they're doing this in the best interest of their students, that they could be giving their student a, a potential way that they would not be able to actually be there on graduation day i- if it's close enough where they, somebody inadvertently gets exposed to the virus if they're not already vaccinated. So they might want to rethink any of those plans, not have them happen prior to all the outdoor events that we're trying to do safely.
It's actually happened last year at multiple buildings, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, people think that they're, that they're, you know, and I, I get it. We all get it, we all want it, but, you know, we're still not out of the woods completely yet. And if we're doing testing, somebody could be ruining their opportunity to actually participate.
Right, and we don't want to see any senior lose the ability to take part in these events. They've lost enough as it is this year. We're trying to give them something. But do what you can to minimize the risk. One thing all these students can do is they're old enough to get the vaccine. And if they have not gotten a vaccine shot yet, they could get in there this week and since Pfizer's a three-week lag time, they could get the second shot.
Before anything.
Right before their, their graduation and, and we know that's not, you're not fully vaccinated, you're further along than you are today. And now, one question for you about the testing, I want to make sure I was clear. We're doing a PCR test that day?
Rapid.
The day before the event.
The day before.
The rapid test.
The rapid test. Sorry, the rapid test. So if somebody chooses to get another test done on their own, doesn't really matter, it's what we see the day before the event?
Well, if they did the PCR, uh, seventy-two hours before and they show us that they are negative, we will not be testing them.
Okay, so either do it on your own and bring us that, that test, or we will be testing you the day before.
Correct. Yeah, and those are the guidelines by the Michigan Health and Human Services.
Any additional questions?
How exciting, looking forward to it.
We're excited.
Ms. Alcadre, thank you to you and the other principals and staff at the high schools for doing what you can for these seniors so that we can try to send them off in the most appropriate way.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask Ms., thank you, Ms. Alcadre, appreciate you and, and the principals. I'm going to have Ms. Peterson stay up when we talk about the virtual learning for next school year, twenty-one, twenty-two. We have put together an application to apply with the state as an official Dearborn Virtual Program, uh, not program, but school, sorry. We got used to the VLP, but the name is changing. And Ms. Peterson, what is the name of that school again, potentially?
The Dearborn Public Schools, Virtual K-12.
Virtual K-
Similar to Michigan Virtual K-12, Dearborn Public Schools, Virtual K-12, it is a school. So it's not a program. And the difference would be like the Academy is a program, so they're connected to their homeschool, students that would decide to transfer to this school, that is their homeschool. Where this year, their homeschool has been a brick and mortar school that they've been attending for years prior.
So we're doing this proactively and understand that under current state law, the legislation that allowed flexibility and our hybrid model right now is working for the time. It's, you know, our mitigation's working in the buildings. I think the trustees have seen that there's been lower incidents. It is safe, but we are gearing up for the fall for full instruction, which means back to having full classrooms. Right now, under current state law, that's what you have to provide unless it changes. Now, when I say that, understand that the Health Department can always step in, uh, you know, the legislature and they could make changes, but that's what we have to do right now. So we're offering this option for parents, the virtual school, that they can apply for. The applications are going to go out soon. The process will be unveiled soon. We're going to make it public, um, probably, I think sometime next week, I believe it'll start and we'll make sure they're well informed. There will be a window for applying for this program. And one of the reasons we need individuals to enroll is because we have to schedule, especially at the secondary level, you know, schedules are occurring right now and in middle school and I can see Ms. Alcadre nodding, she knows the amount of work that goes into scheduling a high school. And so we're going to make sure that we have that option, but I think parents have to understand that we are planning for full, full instruction like we were before. Of course, still following rules and masks and things, depending on what the regulations are at the time. You know, we're going to follow our mitigation plan, whatever the rules are and whatever the Health Department and Health officials recommend, we'll continue to follow, but it will be full instruction. So, um, you know, this year we allowed a lot of flexibility with the windows of enrolling and then changing. There's not going to be that opportunity as much next year because we need to know for scheduling purposes. And that's why we're saying, you know, last year we started online. This year we're starting, we're planning for that full instruction. And so we wanted to put that out there publicly. We will have communications that will go out. But I guess we just want to, Ms. Peterson and I are here, if there's any questions, we're going to give, we'll unveil the details. And we're also planning for several parent sessions where they can come in and learn about the school on Zoom. I think you're scheduling about six of those.
Yeah, I think we have six or seven scheduled. Those, those dates will be shared, I think, our, our communication director. Uh, we will offer, so it'll be via Zoom, they'll see a recording that Ms. Farage, Dr. Tocle and I taped today, today, and then we will be present for Q and A during that Zoom. But we wanted to make sure that any parent could access that recording of information on our website at any time, whether they attended the Zoom or not. And then there will be days to transfer your child to that school. We don't want to say re-enroll because if your child's enrolled in Dearborn Public Schools, you don't need to do all that paperwork, but you will need to let us know that you are selecting this program or this school. Now, Dr. Malak is going to catch me, this school. And there are different, different requirements for next year. This year, we pretty much had an abbreviated day and provided learning labs. Next year, it'll be a longer day, cameras on and different things like that. So those are the things that parents will learn about. We will have a blog already, it's ready to go. So that will be available to parents. And what I will say is, this is really a choice the parents have to think about with their child. Is this really the right environment? And we have provided two different self-assessments that parents can access. Am I, as a parent, available and ready to help my student learn virtually? Is my student really, is this really a fit for them?
Trustee Pellicoff.
A couple of questions. One, is this a K-12?
A-12.
Okay, number one. Number two, is there a number of, where if we don't have the right amount of students who choose to go through the virtual program, that we can't afford to support it?
That's a really good question that I'm going to have to toss to Dr. Malak.
I, I think we'll look at enrollment and I don't anticipate that because we're running it as a district school. So if you're within the boundaries of Dearborn Public Schools, that's how, and that's how we were able to work it efficiently for the elementary students is, you know, you had, for example, students from Gear Park with Miller, potentially with students in other elementaries. So that's how you would consolidate the staffing. Because if you're virtual, you need access to the internet and online and, you know, we provide that support. But that's how the classes will, so it'll have a better opportunity of being efficient. But of course, we'll have to, you know, when you go into the high schools, that's where we're going to have to really look and be creative with scheduling.
Well, and my other consideration is, is what if you have a handful of parents who want the kindergarten, but it's generally not the most ideal o- option for a lot of parents? So do we just tell them, you know, we've only got five parents who actually wanted this and you're just not going to be able to offer it?
I, I mean, we'll look at the numbers and then we'll see.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't want people to think that it's going to be like a slam dunk again because we had a lot of issues with parents who thought that once, you know, we started, you know, there was a lot of confusion between the virtual year and versus the, we were trying to work through the pandemic, um, virtual classes.
And I think that the important part is, is this is a school now. So once enrollment happens, so for elementary, it's very possible that just like in our brick and mortar elementary schools, we would have a multi-age, right? We could have a K-1 if that was enrollment. It gets a little bit trickier with high school because high school students have a more-
Got a lot of specialized, right, yeah.
And there are just some electives that can't offer virtually, so that is another decision.
But those students have a split day then, where part of it was done virtually and they maybe have an hour, they go in?
So for a program, they could. So if they wanted to enter the career tech education, they would have to go in person for that. So that might be a split day for them. But there will be limited, limited electives available in a virtual environment.
Okay.
And we have, Abe Misher has done projections on what he thinks percentage-wise will enroll. Obviously, we project so, but we'll see once, and that's why we're doing the enrollment early enough so we can plan for it.
And I think it's really important as, as many parents can access, attend the Zoom or access the recording because there's going to be a lot of more information. It will be different than the hybrid and remote this year.
Now, that's important to emphasize over and over again then, so that they know that they do their homework then on this.
Absolutely.
I'm anxious to see what it really looks like. I'm not certain.
Trustee Barry.
We saw the students here earlier, that was exciting. We're talking about graduation ceremonies. Been a very exciting night, but I just want to remind everybody, it took a lot of sacrifice to get here. We're talking about opening up our buildings, open up our classrooms. So I want to address the parents, I want to reiterate what Dr. Malak said. By the way, Ms. Peterson and Dr. Malak and your team, amazing work this past year.
Thank you.
I mean, people just don't understand what goes, I mean, the HR department, what happens in the, you know, in the back rooms to get, to get to this point. So thank you very much. Parents, you need to think this through. We're not going to be able to do what we did last year. This is the deadline, get into VLP. Oh, by the way, this is the second deadline. By the way, if you're thinking, you know, talk to your principal. There's a lot of work, there's going to be, I mean, a lot of teachers moving around, we're creating a new school, so think this through before you make your decision. I know most of us will and I personally will support the administration to have a firm commitment from the parents. Once you make that, there's going to be probably, you said, three weeks' application process. Start thinking about what you're going to be doing before the application process opens because when you make that decision, we're pretty much going to hold you to it, so. I just wanted to make sure, I know you said that, I just want to make sure, I know, I spoke to a couple of my colleagues before this meeting and we're pretty much, I think, united on that, so we will support you on this. We want a firm commitment from the parents.
And it's a year-long commitment, which this year we've been, we have been.
In and out.
Dr. Malak has been very gracious about, we're in a pandemic, but June eighth is the transfer deadline and it is a year-long commitment. Opt to have your child go back in person the following year to their homeschool, but it is a year-long.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I know that we're going to be offering this virtual K through 12 school, but then I'm thinking about the traditional classroom, the in face-to-face, and I know there's a lot of unknowns. So I guess come- So I guess come fall time, what are we thinking? I, I've, I'm hearing that we're gonna have, I mean, are we having masks? Are we still maintaining six feet? Are we doing three feet?
I mean, we'll be, we will be following what the Health Department guidelines are at the time and we'll know that the vaccines are coming into play and we see that there's changing all the time with what CDC recommends. Then the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services reacts to it and then they send the orders to the local county health department. So we don't really know right now. We do know the things that work, um, for mitigating that. So at this point in time, I do anticipate we're gonna have, in, indoor, we know that masks are required right now. Whether that changes or not, we will follow the rules and the guidelines and the science. So at this point in time, I'd say yes, but that could be subject to change depending on what kind of situation we're in with the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I will, just to keep stomping on this, reiterate what trustee Barry just said. We were trying to be incredibly accommodative this year with whatever mode of learning people wanted to do with their kids. We cannot keep doing that. You have to make up your mind and you have to stick with it and know that for the older kids, the, you're not gonna all be together. You're not gonna be in the class with some of you in person and some of you, um, sitting at home still. So really think this one through. Thanks.
So I have a few more things. Thank you, President and trustees. We are working on school start times. Uh, we're working hard with my administration and, and to potentially look at not having, you know, high school students so early in the morning, so more to come on that. I don't have any specific times or anything to talk about now because we wanna get our stakeholders involved in some discussions, but we're working on that. And I also wanna mention, uh, last, uh, we just went through Teacher Appreciation Week. We have some outstanding teachers in this, uh, district and I've seen it over many, many years and I sent out a communication on that. And I know, uh, both a one-minute message along with, um, a, a letter on behalf of the board and the district administration. And, you know, we are just so fortunate to have the best teachers in, in the state and in the nation, to be honest. And so we appreciate all the great work they do. I wanna mention too that Dr. Rice came to our district, uh, last month. We were the first district he visited virtually to a couple of our teachers. Couple of examples of our standing teachers, Ms. Alaway at Fortson and I know Ms. Alcadre joined us there and then Ms. Wolfski at River Oaks. And they did a great job and it was, he was looking to come into a leading district to, to set up a model for future visits that he's going to implement during the pandemic. And so we appreciated having him there and I wanna thank those teachers. We have a few other, uh, congratulations or appreciation. It was Nurses Week. We all know the work that our nurses have done, um, and you've seen them. And so I wanna thank all of them for their dedication, not only the nurses in the district, but in the community in general. My mother is a retired nurse, by the way, so, um. We, it was also, I know we recognized our, our kitchen staff and our noon hours in that last month, but it was also last week Lunch Hour Superhero Week, so I wanna thank them again for the work that they do. And I have, uh, two more. Um, we have some mothers here. I hope you guys had a great Mother's Day. I, I mentioned my mother, so, uh, gotta take that time to, um, uh, thank all the mothers out there. And I know it was yesterday. I hope everyone had a relaxing, uh, weekend with their families. Trustee Barry, congratulations on your degree. Way to go. Bachelor of Public Affairs and a minor in Communications, my understanding, so congratulations. Let's give him a big, uh, applause.
Thank you.
And a couple, one more thing I wanna mention. I, I know it's coming later this week, but, uh, I know a lot of the families in the community observe the month of Ramadan and Eid is coming up, so I wanna wish everyone, you know, Eid Mubarak and all the best to you and your families during this, uh, important holiday in the community, so wishing you all the best. And that's it for my, uh, commentary and I do have to sneak out for a second.
Next item, please.
Issue here.
For recognition and acknowledgements.